Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of July 27, 2020. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Here.
Vavakwa.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
All right, would everybody please join us for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of July 27, 2020. All right, welcome everybody on this hot summer night. First we have public comment scheduled and non-scheduled presentation. First we have an update from Oakland County Commissioner.
Peterson.
Adam Kolkendurfer, who was helpful with getting us some money. So Adam, welcome and all right, would everybody please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
All right, thank you Mayor Dixon, member of the city council. I will be brief. I know you guys have a lot going on. So yeah, that was the primary reason that I wanted to appear in front of you guys and just say congratulations. Rochester was one of the first cities in Oakland County to get one of these grants. I think it was just $360,000. And you made it easy on us. So thanks to city manager Wing and the council, they evolved the information that we need to sort of sail through. So thank you very much. There's more on the way. I think Rochester is right behind you guys. And next time you see Mayor Barnett, let him know you submitted your application before him. And we've got a lot more going on. So I was one on the council. I will be brief. I know you guys have a lot going on. So yeah, that was the primary reason I wanted to do it. To appear in front of you guys and just say congratulations. Rochester was one of the first cities in Oakland County to get one of these grants. Backpack, neighborhood house. And you made it easy on us. So thanks to city manager Wing and the council, they evolved the information. They sort of sailed through. And then the latest, thank you very much. There's more on the way. I think Rochester is right behind you guys. Let everybody know. Next time you see Mayor Barnett, let him know you submitted your application before him. To consistently target those small businesses. And we've got a lot more. The restaurants, the personal service. I was one on the city council. And application program went on. You opened it down and I gave it to them. To appear in front of you guys and just say some congratulations. Rochester was one of the first cities. But if anybody's watching, you have one of these grand packs, neighborhood house, website. And you're ready to come to city manager and having to answer the council. So there's still a lot of uncertainty. We don't know what the fall brings for us, but we're trying to use federal monies to let everybody know. Next time you see Mayor Barnett, let him know you've submitted effectively as a can. So so far it's so good, but we're gonna work on it and personally be the answer to any questions that you have in the life.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Commissioner Pogter? See none. Thank you, Adam, and nice to see you. Keep up the good work. Next we have an update from the Rochester Public Library from our outstanding liaison. It's not bad.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Mayor Dixon and City Council, it is a pleasure to be with you this evening. Since last July, when I got back in, thank you so much for your vote. I definitely enjoy this position. We've had many changes, as I'm sure you know. We have a new director. We've probably met already. Julianne is wonderful. And with everything that's going on, she has added me to the staff list in which I receive information at least three times a week. I did not, yeah, that's great. I did not provide an annual report this year as I have done in the past, but I did get one from Julianne that I wanted to quickly review. As I'm also now a part of their policy committee this evening. And we have a policy committee meeting tonight as well. It's a very brief report. It just gives information on annual visits, hardholder numbers, program attendance. As a matter of fact, I provided it and I can make sure I provided it again. Really don't have to go into details of the numbers, but volunteer hours, the funding that came from the friends of the library, all those things. And as you know, due to COVID, those things will look a little differently for 2020. I did not provide.
As far as the library goes, right now, we are in phase.
This year as I have done in the past.
Grab and go style type of service. And I can even give you as I'm also reading on that. What that means is. The service allows visitors to browse the shelves and check items to enjoy outside of the library. The library must appear to certain numerous state laws and they follow that advice and state and local health measures. So that they will have a safe work environment and community environment. So that's just the first informational. And it just means that you want to go in, mask on, have what you are looking for. You still get that service. I've been several times. And then too, if you want to join the summer reading program, it is available. You can do it online in the app. So there's an app that's available. You get many more electronic updates now due to COVID. So you can find a lot of different ways to access the library and get updated information. And if you like, you can put things on hold and pick it up in the library. So outside of the obvious, that things have changed since last year. Last year was actually a pretty good year for the library, even though I only really got half of the year. As you know, I started in July of last year. So that was just a quick, a quick summary, just to bring you up to date with what was going on. And then too, if you want to join the summer reading program, it is available.
Councilmember Albrecht, you unmute yourself?
We're doing that. Okay. Thank you for your reporting, Anna. And like everybody else, I've been working from home, so I've got a box of books to donate to the library. Is the library open for donations?
That is a very good question. I want to say yes, because I thought that I gave something, but I might be special.
No, I gave some.
Okay, so I'm not as special as I thought, Mark. So even though I only really got half of the year, as you know, I started. Yeah, and you know, another thing, if you call in, our services have been so specialized. Honestly, Mark, if you call and let them know, they may even be able to send someone out and then to get it for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Anna, thanks for being here tonight. I have just a couple of questions for you about the library. Number one, are you offering any virtual programming? I know you mentioned summer reading. Is there anything in addition to that that's available online? And also are the bookmobile services back on?
Yes, we are definitely offering virtual programs. I know one that's really popular in my house now. Very crowded. Stable. They're doing it virtually. And I've been with inside, so I have no idea how they handle that, but that's great. But they do have several different programs that they are offering both. And the second question was the bookmobile. Yes. On the website, there is information on the bookmobile, which is also at a phase.
Anna, thanks for being here. I have just a couple of questions for you about the library.
Theirs is a different style.
Number one, are you offering any virtual programming?
Good for bookmobile and good for the virtual program online. They are actually going to try to do as many things technology-wise as possible. To make sure that we maintain the safety of everything. So they want to keep that feeling of just coming in and grabbing and going and not staying. They really don't want, they're doing it out of the library. It's all possible. But we definitely want to provide the same type of services and the same information. And they answer questions quickly. Because I'm always online. They answer questions. Online, we have a lot of supportive technology also. So yeah, and. Theirs is a different style.
I think the library's doing a great job.
And good for the virtual program.
And also, welcome back. Archer Lawson saying thank you for your service.
I definitely make it free today and I love volunteering. It is definitely a stretch of time. So we just try to do the best we can. And I will continue to try to update you with as many changes as possible, especially as we go through various stages. I make sure to keep providing you with information. And I work really closely with them now, like I'm going to a policy committee meeting right now. Julianne and I will try to come up with some other ways that we can make sure to keep the mayor and city council on the lead.
Thank you for serving on the board. Also, while I'm at it, I see the DeFrankos there. Thank you guys for serving on the. I think the library's doing a great job. Next we have a presentation of the city beautiful residential standard of excellence awards. Archer Lawson, you think that or your councilmember Keith Lee or?
Mayor, I think Jane is going to take that one. She's prepared a bit of a presentation for our award winners. And I'd just like to congratulate the recipients of our residential standard of excellence award. This is the first year we've initiated that through the city beautiful commission. So I'm sorry that our chair, Tammy Byers, was unable to be here tonight. We're really excited that some of the award recipients can be here. We've had so much fun going through our city and looking at different homes and how you've landscaped and kept up the appearance of your homes. And it's really tough to land on sticks, but we have six finalists within our city and how the homes look great. So thank you for adding to the beauty of our town.
Mayor, actually, I have a report for a resident that we have some technical difficulties on our cast. So we might just want to pause for a moment while they look into that. You can't, the audio is garbled with a heavy echo. So if you wouldn't mind, just pausing for a moment. So I'm sorry that we tried to figure that out.
I don't have to get up and go to school tomorrow.
And if you aren't muted and you're not speaking, if I could ask that you make sure that you are on mute, that might help.
And how you've landscaped and kept up the appearance of your homes. And it's really tough to land on sticks, but we have six finalists within our city and how the homes look great. So thank you for adding to the beauty of our town.
Mayor, actually, I have a report for a resident that we have some technical difficulties on our cast. So we might just want to pause for a moment while they look into that. You can't, the audio is garbled with a heavy echo. So if you wouldn't mind, just pausing for a moment.
I don't have to get up and go to school tomorrow.
And if you aren't muted and you're not speaking, if I could ask that you make sure that you are on mute. And so just as a proclamation, recognizing the city beautiful standard of excellence award winners. Whereas the Rochester City Beautiful Commission, as part of its mission to promote the public interest in the general appearance of the city, and whereas created the residential standard of excellence award to recognize homeowners who take exceptional pride in the care and maintenance of their front yard and exterior of their home. And whereas this award is a prestigious honor that serves to recognize the best of the best in keeping the city beautiful. And whereas in selecting the recipients of this award, the commission considered the home's lawn and landscaping, care given to the entryway, the condition of the home, driveway and mailbox, as well as the overall attention to detail. And whereas the city celebrates these homeowners with the residential standard of excellence awards. And now therefore be a proclaim that on this day, July 27, 2020, the city of Rochester hereby proclaims the city's recognitions of the recipients of the 2019 city beautiful standard of excellence award. So mind, I will show you everyone these beautiful homes and give them the recognition that they deserve here.
I don't want them to be too nice, I'm gonna be jealous.
And whereas in selecting the recipients of this award. And if we have someone from each of these homes, I don't know, there's quite a few people on this call. And so 80 Great Oaks Boulevard, if the resident is here from the homeowners here from this, can feel free to unmute when you want to say a couple of words. We'll keep going to. 323 Terry, I do believe we have those residents.
That's correct. We are here.
Your house is two or three years old now?
We've been in the house for two years.
Two years.
And it took about 18 months to build.
There's quite a few people on this call. And so 80 Great Oaks Boulevard.
We're really glad to be part of the Rochester community.
And then 933 Rose Lawn, I believe we have those residents as well with us.
Sorry, technically, that's, yep, that's us. That's the DeFrankos. Thanks so much.
323 Terry, I do believe we have those residents.
Took about a year to build.
That's correct.
No, it was a lot of fun. And we really appreciate the fact that it was a fun project.
We've been in the house for two years.
Part of downtown, we've been in Rochester. Thirty years, but just come into downtown.
Thank you. We're really glad to be part of the Rochester community.
568 Spring View Drive. And then nine, we have 33 Rose Lawn. I believe we have those residents as well with us. There as well. And then keep going to 1118 Terracourt.
DeFrankos, thanks so much.
Hi, this is us. We've been here since for about eight years now. And ever since we moved into our sub, I've always seen that house down the street with a fountain. You know who I'm talking about?
No, it was a lot of fun.
So I try to keep up with that home, which is beautiful as well. But I've worked at golf courses my whole life, and I've really enjoyed being outside. I think we tore everything apart and started this dress. So I enjoy it. It's a great honor to.
Last, but definitely not least, 1293 Public Point Drive. So that is beautiful as well. Thanks to everyone's hard work.
Yeah, we're here. We're kind of the senior citizens. That house is 29 years old.
Hi, this is us. We've been here since for about eight years now.
Beautiful. Thank you again.
Ever since we moved into our sub, I've always seen that house down the street with the fountain.
Can I be recognized?
So I try to keep up with that home, which is beautiful as well.
I had the pleasure of driving around the community. We got OPC bus and Jane kind of just getting over it, but it was all sorry, Amanda did that. We spent hours and looked at every home, literally. Someone looked at every home in this community from downtown.
Last, but definitely not least, 1293 Public Point Drive.
Yeah, we're here. We're kind of the senior citizens. That house is 29 years old. I guess it's us. We've been here since for about eight years now.
Beautiful. Thank you again.
Ever since we moved into our sub, I've always seen that house down the street with the fountain.
I think Nick makes a really good point. We had a team of, I think, 12 people. We broke it into six different segments of the Rochester community. We all went and looked at our like individual segment and then came back with like a list of six that we took the OPC bus around to actually like vet each home. And it was a great evening to do together. And it was really hard to decide because there's so many beautiful properties in our community.
Thank you guys for all your work. And thank you guys for all the new winners. The street places is really Rochester. So thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
And when the COVID is over, we'll all be happy to be invited over to your places.
Nick makes a really good point. We had a team of, I think, 12 people.
All right, thank you.
We broke it into six different segments of the Rochester community.
Okay, next is on the recognition of historic home marker recipients.
And then came back with like a list of six that we took the OPC bus around to actually like vet each home. And it was a great evening to do together.
Yes, we have Lynn Anderson on the call and she's with the historical commission. And if you want to read the proclamation, I'd be happy to as well.
And thank you guys for all the new winners. The street places is really Rochester. Lynn, did you want to say something first?
Congratulations.
And when the COVID is over, we'll all be happy to be invited over to your places. You want me to read the proclamation or does everybody have in their packet? All right, thank you, everybody.
Everyone should have that in your packet. And I do see Lynn on here. And she was unmuted, so. Yes, we have Lynn Anderson on the call and she's with the historical commission. And if she's unable to connect, I can give a brief overview from the historical commission. Been lucky enough to work with Lynn and the other commission members. This is a great program that residents can opt into to recognize their historic nature of their home. A lot of the mid-century homes are now available to be recognized as long as you're 50 years or older. So we had some really excited residents and they were very enthusiastic about receiving their markers. So and it's nice to see quite a variety of age in our, in the homes that are being recognized now. If you wouldn't mind, again, I'd just like to scroll through. We got some, Lynn had some nice photos when she was able to. Pack it's, or the plaques to the, to the recipients. So and then I will just jump onto that. Scroll through those quickly. This is a great program that residents can opt into to recognize their historic nature of their home. A lot of the mid-century homes are now. And Lynn knows them a little bit better. If she is able to call them, she can, she can give you a little more detail about each of these. She does, is able to chime in. So we'll scroll through. Very enthusiastic about receiving their markers of the. And it's nice to see quite a variety of age in our, in the homes that. If anyone is interested in receiving a plaque of Lynn Anderson, it's first in contact and the historical commission loves to see the historic preservation. And the city itself. To the recipients, so.
And that program for financial reasons got suspended for a few years.
And Lynn knows them a little bit better. If she is able to call on, she can give you a little more detail about each historic. She does, is able to chime in. I think Steve might want to chime in.
Do you have a comment?
Quite a variety of ages in the home.
So yes, this program is to celebrate homes that were built prior to 1969. And so as part of public record, I guess I want to read the last part of the proclamation now there, Corby, proclaiming on the stage, July 27, 2020, Mayor in the city of Rochester hereby proclaim the city's appreciation of James Reed, Carrie and Mark Com, Emmett Lombard, Gladys McKinney and Tom Mines. And recognizing the march with the Rochester history.
Okay, so that's a great program. Congratulations on that.
I think Steve might want to.
All right, next we have approval of the minutes, the consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting in July 30, 2020. Councilmember Albrecht.
Just a minor thing, we had on 10D, it was a motion, but it didn't show the yes or no vote underneath there. So just make sure that's added for the final.
Thank you for picking that up.
Anything else? Adam, please. So that's a great program. Congratulations. Yes.
Vavakwa?
All right, next we have.
Albrecht?
Approval of the minutes, the consideration of the major meetings.
Peterson? Sage?
Yeah.
Salvia?
Thank you. Next is the approval consent agenda, which is a review of the current council member Albrecht.
Just a minor thing.
By councilmember Peterson, support by councilmember Albrecht.
Dixon?
Yes.
Vavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Thank you for picking that up.
Sage?
Yeah.
Salvia?
Yes.
Next, we do not have any old business or table items. We don't have any public hearings. Legislation. Resurrection, adoption of the resolution regarding the GLEWA rules and regulations. Mr. City Manager, did you want to comment on that?
Mayor, I think I'll take that one.
The attorney followed up with our public works director. So maybe Attorney Grattan, I'm happy to add a few comments after.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, thank you. Before the city council for consideration as a resolution, that it concurs with the rules and regulations regarding the industrial pre-treatment program as adopted by GLEWA. If council remembers, a number of years ago, GLEWA came out with a model discharge ordinance that since the city is one of the participants with GLEWA, one of the members, it was required to adopt the model ordinance. When the, when we did adopt the model ordinance, worked with the DPW director at the time, and we, we kind of made some tweaks to the model ordinance to allow the city to also maintain control over its discharge regulations. It wasn't just a complete turnover to GLEWA, but it did reserve rights for the city of Rochester to do as well. In this go around, the GLEWA is, was adding some additional rules and modifying some that instead of having a new model ordinance, the decision by GLEWA was apparently to, is to just have a full set of rules and regulations for discharge. And it required its member communities to adopt, adopted by resolution, saying that they agree to those discharge requirements. Now, this is required of, since we are a member of GLEWA participant. So when this is brought to our attention, this was actually adopted back in November, these rules. And we have until, there's a time in September that we have to adopt the, adopt these rules or agree with them. It's not, it's not an ordinance amendment. It's a resolution. The red, the, the rules amount to about 89 pages of material. I didn't reproduce them all, but in the, in the packet. But our consultant, JNA, went through those and didn't find them to be problematic for what the city of Rochester that's discharged. We did ask GLEWA if we could modify it slightly, the resolution, to just recognize that the city also maintains authority, just like as we do now. Concurrent authority on that. And, and also to, to help push that change through. We suggested that whatever the most stringent discharge limitation is, is the one that we would follow. So if they thought our, our discharge limitation was more lenient, then we would adopt, then we would follow the GLEWA's. And so that was, we went through a couple of changes with them and they were, they approved this version of the resolution. So the requested action, and I know Sandy, I see Sandy on, if she has anything to add, but our, our engineer went through the discharge and didn't discharge terms and didn't take the issue with them. So the request of action for city council is to, as a constituent municipality with GLEWA's, to adopt this resolution that, that adopts their rules.
Very good. Sandy, did you want to add anything?
No, actually, I think Jeff got everything in there. Thank you very much.
Okay. Council? Councilmember Albrecht?
I'd make a motion to, for the city to agree to adopt the GLEWA rules and regulations by reference, except to the extent inconsistent with city code.
Support.
Motion by councilmember Albrecht, support by councilmember Peterson. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Vavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on to reports and regular businesses. Agenda item A has been pulled from the agenda. The applicants decided. Uh, the applicants decided to not uh have the event at this time and they will let us know if they want to look in the future, so. Um, they pulled that from the agenda. And then next we have the two presentations um for our master planning services of a- as I mentioned to some people that I talked to, that we are not going to be making a decision today. We're going to make it next week. So um we will just be um doing the presentations tonight, you know, question and answer. And then at the next meeting, uh we will make a decision. Um, Mr. City Manager, did you want to uh say anything?
Uh, just that we had five uh applicants and uh we narrowed it down to these two finalists. And uh again, just as you stated, um there's not a decision tonight, but we're bringing this forward uh for a decision at the next council meeting.
Okay, so first we have Beckett and Raider. That's how you say, um, and wel- welcome. Uh, you might want to introduce yourselves just just now and then, um, give us your plan.
Well, thank you very much for having us. I very much appreciate it. We're um pleased to be here to talk to you about this exciting master plan update. Um, I'd be delighted to introduce us. Um, I'll start with myself. My name is Leo Du Michel. I am a principal at Beckett and Raider, also planner, and I will be the project lead here. Um, I'm leading a team here in partnership with Walker Consultants, um parking experts. Uh, both firms um have been in business for over fifty years of excellence, so that's a century of experience between us. Um, I would like to emphasize, you know, a little bit of our shared commitment um between the two firms uh to achievable strategies. And we really are looking for, you know, plans that get things done and um finding the best best way to move forward. Um, feeding into that is tailored expertise to specific challenges. We want to hear what can move you forward and to propose um exactly what will make a difference. And um because planning just had solves no easy problems. Those are all done in some other departments. Everything that we do involves uh teamwork and consensus. Um, we're very focused on engaging all helpful resources. So I'm going to introduce the folks on this slide who are not here and then um I have several team members who are here with me who will talk uh introduce themselves to you. Um, I'll start with our landscape architect partners, um led by Christie Summers and also my colleague Sinmin Liu. We work uh very closely uh with our landscape architect partners. Um, and basically anything the project calls for. Here, we particularly envision that to be a fruitful partnership in the design of your downtown connections. Um, along the bottom there, we have our GIS specialist, Rowan Brady, um I who is a very integral part of our team. Here, we believe that basically anything worth planning is worth thinking about spatially, and so we really take advantage of this tool that is available to all of us to make better planning decisions. And finally, um down there, also Liz Gunden, who in addition to being just an excellent ace planner, um has a background in uh graphic design, which is what helps us to really make our product as engageable, engaging and inviting as it can possibly be, leading to, you know, better engagement use of it. I would like to now introduce my colleague, Michelle Bennett.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Michelle. I'm a planner with Beckett and Raider. I work primarily on master plans and more recently trying to integrate sustainability plans into master plans so that they have that kind of stronger backing. And then more recently, since um covid has come into play, I've really been transitioning our team into new forms of engagement, which we'll talk about a little bit more later.
And Sean?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Winter. I am a planner out of the Traverse City office. My area focus is um zoning. Um, prior to working at the firm, I was a planning and zoning administrator myself, so I bring the perspective both of writing the regulatory policies as well as administering them in real life.
And John Dorset of Walker Consultants.
Thank you, Leia. This is John Dorset with Walker Consultants. I'm happy to be here representing Walker. Uh, we're a Michigan-based firm uh that was founded nineteen sixty-five. We have two offices in Michigan, uh one in Kalamazoo and the other in Ann Arbor. Um, we would bring uh all things parking related to the project if and as needed. Um, I'm a certified planner. I've been with Walker for more than thirty years. And uh we perform over five hundred parking studies annually. So any issue related to parking that would come up, we would be prepared to address that, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna just start right off by saying um a few reasons why I think where we think that we are a good partner for you in this endeavor. And then we'll get into kind of the specifics of how we think we can work together um on this master plan update. As we've mentioned, we're both Michigan-based firms. We are invested here. We are um we we think that that is really important. Um, we have each been making beautiful and functional places for over fifty years, so we know what works and more importantly, maybe what doesn't. We'll get into this a little bit more um as we go through the the slideshow, but we really practice what we preach regarding sustainability practices. This is not just something we say. This is not just something that is the best practice to us. This is really what we are trying to do to make the world a better and longer lasting place. Um, we have won more master plan awards than any other firm in this state, and we think that that's important specifically because it speaks to our kind of relentless focus on customization and innovation. There's no such thing as a cookie cutter plan with us. We are meeting communities where they're at and moving them forward. We have a knack for storytelling. I think that's particularly important in a master planning process because it is a chapter in a community's history and understanding how it relates to the chapter before and more importantly, the chapter after is what is what gives the the plan the teeth and its teeth and moves it forward. I've already mentioned um how much we value spatial analysis for guiding policy. And I think it's important to point out um our diverse professional backgrounds, not only as integrated firms, but also um in our backgrounds and history. We really believe that a breadth of perspective is the only way to see the whole picture. Um, and we think that that idea is related to the strength in our female-led team. This is a perspective and an approach that we think brings real value to um to the proposition. So speaking of that approach, um we'll get right into it. I'm gonna turn this over to Michelle to start um an overview and I would just first like to acknowledge um that this uh request for proposals is for a timely update to a well-written plan and that um we have really structured this proposal to preserve and further the good work that's already been done while bringing a fresh perspective um and making substantial targeted progress where you really need it. Take it away, Michelle.
Sure. Um, so we'd like to start our new projects with a kickoff meeting so that we can sit down with a group of stakeholders um and go over expectations of the project, make sure that we understand what the exact outcomes are, exchange important documents. Um, it's a way for us to get um caught up and establish a team that will oversee this project. Um, we also propose coming in, spending a day doing fieldwork there to help us judge the scale of uh of issues that we see, record notes with our, we have a handy-dandy collector app that's really helpful for us to record and take photos and geolocate any of our observations. Um, so it's a great way for us to become, you know, more spatially aware with the city as well. Um, so in addition to the steering committee who we will be meeting with regularly and a project website where we can host all of these materials to communicate um in one place, we have some pretty innovative ideas, again, that have been sort of born out of um Corona and moving things online. Um, we're hoping that this will be helpful considering no one knows when this um crisis will be over, that we can um really lean heavily on these and um some of them are already tested out and have been going well. So um our first one here is virtual visioning. That would be live um remote visioning session. So we know you already have one, but this is a good I um a good chance to sort of update, refine and kind of add in some more sustainable sustainability language as well into that. Um, we could really hone in here as well after we've looked at your two thousand seven survey results. Again, not starting from scratch, building on what you already have to really see where do we need more information and bring that to the public. The neighborhood-based um engagement is more um specific to those geographic areas where there might be some proposed changes to zoning, so that can be map-based, but also online, um so that we can have people dropping points in specific locations and getting some um feedback on um specific areas. And then the open house story map, I think, really showcases um again our spatial analysis or sorry, using spatial analysis and um bringing that online to a much easier format for our casual reader. You know, we're not expecting every resident to read it front to back. Um, we know that if we make it condensed, engaging, a hold a session to teach people how to use it, that we can get a lot more um buy-in and usership from the residents. Now, we don't have enough time tonight to go over everything that we've proposed, but I did want to at least have one slide that showed these are all of the areas we plan to touch on during the uh master plan phase, but as we go on, I'm just gonna touch on a few that I think will have the biggest impact or the most change. Um, namely, that's with population and housing, so that's a really um fundamental to a master plan. So we just um want to look at some updates in employment, education, income, sort of our socioeconomic indicators, and then look at the future, um what's projected for the region, and then really try to tie in with our analysis, you know, what demographic groups are looking for, um and that usually plays out in the housing market. So um all of these different housing types here are to show how can we connect our people to um to different types of housing that will meet their needs.
When we talk about um thoroughfares, we would like to pick up on the complete streets reference in your current plan. Um, and we'd like to move it to the next level by sort of focusing on network analysis to really get a sense of how usable those facilities are to actually get somewhere. Um, we'd like to frame that analysis sort of by thoroughfare. And we're what we're trying to get at here is the beginnings of a non-motorized hierarchy based on use and characteristics. So similar to the way that our our roads are characterized by what we expect them to do, their collectors, their um residential streets. Uh, we would like to sort of expand that understanding to the non-motorized um networking world. In our discussion of utilities, um in addition to, you know, the routine updates, we would like to kind of hone in on green infrastructure placement. So there's um a map again, you know, employing that spatial analysis that we just love, that, you know, combines a variety of factors to um estimate suitability of for placement of green infrastructure assets. We think um we I would assume that in a sort of more developed concept context such as Rochester, um we would be redesigning that analysis to really uh focus on availability and opportunity for such such improvements.
Okay, another area of integration into the master plan would be taking your sustainability framework, which was um done somewhat quite recently. Um, but taking that one step further and putting that into your master plan, like I said earlier, to give it that greater weight and emphasis um in your planning processes. So um incorporating the findings on these six major topics that you've already looked into and really using that same framework, except for this time, we would really take this action that was laid out to heart and um try to update your master plan so that there's a direct link to your zoning ordinance and local policy um regarding sustainability efforts. Um, so in that process, we would also be trying to incorporate sustainability into this into the vision and also looking at any other data that's local or regional that we can um we can incorporate and use as a backbone for for these efforts.
Future land use and intensity change. Um, we see this as really being a major area of focus in this project, and I think you do too. Um, we've reviewed the work that's been done to date that's been available to us, including the future land use described in the current master plan, as well as later zoning proposals. Um, it appears to us um that the the task at hand tasks at hand are really kind of focused around refinement and engagement. So um we think that, you know, a major a major initiative will be to bring everybody together, the staff, the commissions, the authorities, the folks who are really going to be charged with moving this forward and clearly understanding um any remaining concerns as well as getting a very clear picture of what we think these um proposed changes will improve about the community. And that will form the baseline of our rollout strategy. So as we're identifying educational needs, as we are telling the communicating to the community, um what the changes will be and the kind of a new framework that the city is operating under, that I think will be the refrain that we return to, that we will be very clear on. How is this making it better? And how can we um make that information as widely understood as possible? Once we internally are very clear and on the same page, um it will be time to bring in the real users of the code, which is the local development community. Um, we think that it would be an excellent opportunity for this city to invite your participants, your local development community who you know will be um will be operating under these rules and to ask them to identify potential pitfalls, which I'm sure they are excellent at. And to, in the same vein of, you know, really having a breadth of perspective to understand the full picture, um bringing their view, uh their close-up view of the applicability of this ordinance to specific parcels. They are the ones who are going to know, yes, but on that parcel there or on this series here, um where where there are a set of constraints that may not be um at top of mind to us, but which will absolutely improve our work overall. We'll move from there to the downtown connections. As I said, this connects back up to the um work we will have done in the thoroughfares and utilities. Um, advancing it by tapping our landscape architect partners to inform solid and where we can do it, innovative solutions for connectivity. An important part here will be prioritizing projects that complete the network, so getting as much mobility as we possibly can for um for our investments. And then we would like to, we know that you've made some significant strides on parking. This has been an important issue to you and we'd like to invite John to talk a little bit about um what we can offer there.
We recognize you've made significant parking improvements since, especially since two thousand thirteen. Uh, the addition of the two parking tiers, uh over five hundred and fifty spaces. Uh, you've added technology in the form of smart parking meters that offer credit card acceptance. And also, uh, you've added a payment by cellphone. We also noticed that you've adjusted um your rates uh in parking enforcement hours and days of the week. Um, we know that you have a plan in place for customer and employee parking. And we know that the city and the downtown development authority have worked together in a partnership to uh make a number of these improvements come to fruition. Um, so moving forward, uh, we would intend to help build on this good work that you've done. And um we wonder if it would be appropriate to review maybe any outstanding implementation activities relative to parking that haven't yet been put in place. Um, specifically, um, does the parking enterprise work? Are we dipping into the general fund to pay for parking expenses? Um, are there other technologies that you might want to implement? And then finally, are there um additional modifications to some of the parking policies and practices that you already have in place? Again, we don't pretend to have all the solutions at this point, uh but we do bring a wealth of knowledge and experience and we would plan to bring that to bear on your project and we would welcome, you know, you to pick our brains and we would come up with uh some solutions that we know have been successful in other locations.
And then finally, I would invite Sean to talk a little bit about um implementation. So we kind of have, there's a couple of checks going on in the request for proposals. There's a master plan update and then also some implementation of some previous work um that I would invite Sean to see.
Thank you. So as you know, the zoning ordinance is one of the regulatory tools for implementing the master plan. As such, the the specific standards related to zoning will really be borne out through the planning process, but we would like to address um our approach to the items that were specified. So for zoning classifications, we'll be guided in this process by the new future land use map, the established categories, the zoning plan that will be part of that adopted document. We'll look for opportunities to modify the existing district boundaries and standards and where appropriate, establish new districts that reflect the recommendations of the plan. Um, this is going to include taking a hard look at the lawful uses, dimensional standards and development guidelines within each district. And finally, we'll prepare the language to adopt and codify the recommended district changes as an amendment. Um, for the special projects ordinance, I'd like to commend the city for this forward-thinking approach to accommodate infill development, repurposing sites whose uses may no longer exist um and creating areas of intensity that may serve as beneficial transition. So we'll review the appropriate locations for this development option, determining changes um that should be made to add or remove eligible areas and identify the appropriate level of intensity increase allowed at each location. Additionally, we'll review the current approval process, exploring opportunities for improvement such as public input, standards for approval and design guidelines, and then we'll draft the necessary amendment language as well. For the sign standards, we would work with an established team of stakeholders, ideally with representation from the city staff, the DDA, planning commission and potentially city council. We'll review your existing ordinance for content neutrality, making the necessary recommendations to regulate time, place and manner. And then lastly, we would propose to regulate each sign type into a nice, clear. And then lastly, we would propose to regulate each sign type into a nice, clear table that provides a definition, precedent image, general regulations applicable to that type of sign. Then we would organize the standards for that sign type specific to each district, such as area, height, location, quantity, illumination. And we feel that this will allow for right sizing the signage to the existing context and character of each district.
I just have a couple of slides sort of on the, you know, on the details, which I'll be pretty quick about. The one is just a project timeline that letting you know that we have thought this through in a detailed way. There's kind of a lot of moving parts here, but we think we can certainly coordinate them to meet your 15-month timeline. And then just a word about the budget. I have never proposed a project this way. When I wrote this proposal, it was in May, we were all locked down, nobody was sure about the future. And now here we are, three months later, we are not quite as locked down, and nobody is sure about the future. So this was designed to be as flexible as it possibly could be. So with the sort of idea in mind that we did not want project progress to stop on account of any sort of limitations, you know, due to COVID or limits on gathering restrictions. So we have envisioned this project as being conducted fully remotely, if need be. That's, you know, brand new for us, brand new for you. We think that that will offer some opportunities that we would not have taken otherwise. We think that, you know, I'm 100% on Team Lemonade. We think that there will be some things in this process that, you know, we wish to carry forward, and also that there will be some that we're like, wow, I wish that was different, but that's okay. And I myself was rather surprised when I put this together at, you know, there's no getting around the fact that we jiggering the project in this way saves an awful lot of time, money, and wear and tear on the environment. So I think that this is an exciting opportunity, maybe not one that we would have picked out of a hat, but since it is in front of us, full speed ahead. But flexibility was absolutely key in putting together this proposal. So we have offered the ability to pivot on a per-event basis, on a whole project basis. We have the ability to start with one course of action and change to the other if we, you know, if times change, if we change, if something isn't working as we want to. So I just did want to say that we've not done this before exactly like this, and I'm pretty excited about it, really. And then finally, I would just like to share with you just a couple of projects that we are particularly proud of and think that have, we think that they have some bearing on what we would, on our partnership here in Rochester. So one is the Trenton Coast Resiliency Master Plan, which as far as we know, is the first in Michigan to fully reimagine a master plan through the lens of resiliency. The questions we asked were different, we covered all of the standard subjects, but we did them in what we think is a unique and innovative way. And another is the City of Sturgis Master Plan, in which we embarked on an extensive community engagement program. I would not say that any of the tools that we use were particularly wild or out of the box, but what we did do was carefully curate which ones would be most effective to reach the specific Sturgis community. And then I would, just before we open it up for questions, it's time to share a project example. Nope, you're muted, John.
Pardon me. We did a study for downtown Farmington. And basically, they were concerned about whether or not they had ample numbers of parking spaces, so we did a parking needs analysis. And then we followed up with a study that identified solutions to make sure that we had ample parking within the downtown. So we studied several different alternative sites. We identified capacities that we could be built on those sites. And then we also looked at some different costs for those facilities and provided recommendations. And the city found that information very helpful, and they're still using it in their current planning efforts.
Great. Thank you, and we thank you very much for your time, and we'd be delighted to answer any questions you may have.
Leah, thank you for your presentation. Councilor, their question, if you could maybe take that down so I can see.
Mayor, maybe I suggest that we ask questions now on this particular one, but if there's other questions or comments that our council members email Jane, so that we can create a question and answer, so we can follow up with both this vendor and the other vendor, you know, and I can get those answers over the next week or two prior to the next council meeting on August 10th.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you very much for your presentation, walking us through and having everybody participate to do that. I had two questions. Sean mentioned he was appreciative that we had the special projects ordinance. How many cities or places that you work with do that? Because you have both the pros and cons of the special project ordinance. You seem to be complimentary of it. Can you just weigh in a little bit on that, Sean?
Yeah, I haven't seen it in the form that you guys have very often, to be honest. I see it as some variation as a planned unit development, allowing that flexibility in certain areas. And that's one thing that we've discussed internally is reviewing whether or not in its current form is the special ordinance is the most appropriate, or redeveloping some sort of adapted PUD. And that's something that will support further as we go through this process, and will be guarded, guided by some of the public input that we have received.
Thank you, Sean. And then my second question was for Leah. When you had the budget slide, you had the 44,700 for remote meetings and the ability to pivot 11,700. Are those additive? Are those?
So if we do the whole thing remotely, it is the first number. If we do the whole thing like as we traditionally would, where we come to you, it would add the additional 11. And so, but you have the ability to pick and choose in there, say, steering committee meetings, you don't see the benefit of us coming there, but visioning session you absolutely want to have in person. So that would be the kind of partnership there.
11,700 is sort of the à la carte.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Councilmember Keithley.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think that was really insightful and helpful to hear. I have a two-part question. It's more for Michelle, I think. I'm wondering, and I know that this is an untraditional time, and you're coming up with new ways to engage our community, but what has your success rate in the past been like to get community members involved in this process and to gather their feedback? And then this is for the entire team, is what do you love most about our town of Rochester?
So for the first question, are you asking in person what has been our success in the past of getting people to meetings?
Yeah, if you have numbers or insights in both formats, that would be great. But I'm wondering what the success has been in getting community members to engage in this process overall.
Sure. So I would say usually our main role is to plan all of the content, to make the content engaging, and then we work with the community. And a lot of that is based on their established networks. So if they have a lot of organizations they partner with, if they have long listservs, if they have, if they feel really connected to their communities when we see the best outcomes, because they can in a couple of days reach thousands of people. And so I've seen quite the range of a handful of people to, sometimes I had a meeting with 85 people. So I think that depends on our, on how we work on that together and really determine who we want to target and how we're going to get the message out. With the new online format, I think that's new and it's still catching on. So I think that I don't have a really good sense yet. I've done it a few times, but I have noticed we've gotten a broader range of people, if not greater numbers, people that you might not always see at the meetings if they're being held during dinnertime, or when people put their children to bed. Now someone can just jump online and come to the meeting, they don't have to get a babysitter or whatnot. So the numbers are still to be determined, but I think the range is much broader and more representative.
That's great.
Yeah.
Councilmember Salvia.
Yes, thank you. So Leah, you mentioned the phrase, there's no such thing as a cookie cutter plan.
Yeah.
So how do you, what tools, strategies, tactics do you use to bring innovation, bring creativity? You know, a good plan is a balance of listening as well as bringing things and ideas that we or anyone in our community has never thought of. So how do you do that?
I think that that almost always starts with the data. So in the beginning, a good scan of understanding, just really getting a good handle and a nuance of what the issues are, because the solutions are really driven by a good understanding of the question, and that's just true kind of all the time. So I think that it has sort of already started with our, with your tremendous suite of already adopted plans. So what you have given us is a really solid foundation for where you are, and then sort of what remains to be addressed. So for example, with the parking, for instance, you've done considerable work there. And so while I would not always say that a master plan must have a robust parking component, the fact that you, that this is a process in motion for you means that I am fairly confident that we are going to be able to find at least a few very targeted, very Rochester specific solutions that will move you forward. Did that answer the question?
I think so, in some aspects, yes. You know, we're always looking for new ideas. What's the thing that we just need for our city that we haven't thought of yet?
Yeah, and I do think that there is a balance between the new shiny, exciting thing that frankly, we haven't heard of because it's maybe not useful for every single person, and the thing that we might not have thought of it on sort of the first scan, but that is perfect for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions? Jane, you had a question?
I do see a caller that just called in, so if you might want to ask for public comment on this item before we move on to the next, if they want to raise their hand dialing star nine, we can know if they want to comment.
Did that person want to comment on this issue?
With the last three digits of 158.
No. Mayor Protem Babacua, well, you had a comment, question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question. I just wanted to see if we could get a little more information on environmental considerations, and if there's any examples of work that you've done where environmental considerations have, you know, provided some guidance or, you know, changed direction, or added an element to the plan that you maybe didn't think about until you started considering the environmental impact.
I would say that that happens often because they're not always visible. And so when we're going through and doing our research, they will become more apparent to us. And so, you know, we've worked all across the state, so we have experience with coastal management, we have experience with, you know, contaminated sites, which is big in southeast Michigan. But all of those require a bit of digging first, but it's something we take very seriously to always address the environment. And I see that can be, you know, sort of an overlap with the sustainability portion as well. If that is something that's of importance to the city, we could potentially add like another, you know, you already have those six categories, but we could add more.
Yeah, I think, I think the watershed is pretty important in our community and something that, you know, if we move forward, would have to consider when doing master planning. Obviously, we have rivers that are a part of our community, and we're currently discussing with our planning partner right now, infill housing and possible impact on, you know, stormwater utility with hardscaping of, you know, property, hardscaping percentages. So just want to kind of hope that you would keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
And I think that we really strive to keep it in mind at a variety of scales. So just to take the example of housing, right? So just from the broadest planning principle, locating housing in, you know, dense areas that are able to sort of reduce transportation burdens is, you know, kind of one major level. And then on the level of, say, a site redevelopment housing, ensuring that we are able to keep as much stormwater as possible on that site, and site design would be another layer of consideration. Really, I think just one benefit of having resiliency and these considerations top of mind all the time is that they touch everything that we do. And so we're able to, probably isn't the right word, but to put together a variety of actions that together can make a very substantial impact.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Peterson.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for your presentation. It is breath of fresh air to see the depth and scope of a firm with all the tools and technology that you have in place to work all the various facets of a community. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. It was very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments? I just, again, I'd like to thank you guys for all showing up tonight. You know, just a couple of comments I have. For Sean, the special project is, you know, something we definitely want to take a look at, I think. It seems like every project now is a special project. So is, you know, is that where we want to be or not where we want to be? I mean, that's something we want to look at. And I think we, and Mr. Dorsett, I think we have made a lot of progress in parking with our garages and parking garages. But I think, you know, how we're paying for it and how we're using it, and new businesses in town and stuff, so I mean, I think that's something that we really do need to take a long, hard look at as well. So, you know, those are some issues that I see. So appreciate you coming tonight. As I say, we're going to have your presentation and another presentation, and we are planning on having a decision at the next council meeting for you guys. As we said, Blaine, if council people have questions, they can get them to Blaine, and then he can get them to you, and hopefully get any questions council people have back. So any further questions from council? Leah, any further comments or all set?
No, I would just like to thank you again for your invitation. I very much enjoyed meeting you, and yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming very much tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Blaine, are we ready for the next?
Yeah, I see that McKenna has joined us, so.
Okay, so Vidya, take, you're on, Vidya.
Good evening, Mayor Vixen, members of the council and city administration. Thank you for inviting us tonight to make a presentation before you for the city's master plan. Most of you know me. For those who don't, my name is Vivya Krishnan, and I have had the honor of serving as the city of Rochester's planning consultant for the last 10 years. I would like to invite our vice president from McKenna, Sarah Traxler, to now go ahead and make the presentation.
Sure, thank you. Julie is pulling up our slide program here, and as Vidya mentioned, we really wanted to thank the city leaders for asking us to present this evening. Vidya is a familiar face, and we know that, you know, working with Rochester over the last 10 years has been a great honor for our firm. Because of that knowledge of Rochester, plus our planning, public engagement, and implementation expertise, we think that we are uniquely situated to be your chosen partners for this planning effort. While the presentation is being pulled up, I will introduce our team. As Vidya mentioned, I'm a vice president with McKenna, and I've been planning for Michigan communities there for 15 years. I think I see a couple of familiar faces from a housing presentation I had done in Rochester some years ago, and I would be really pleased to work with you again on this effort. I am an Oakland County resident and have worked as the planner in the Village of Franklin for a number of years, and I'm currently managing McKenna's part of the Birmingham Master Plan project, which I'll get into a little bit of detail, how those experiences will inform my guiding of this process as a project director. Julie Conneke has been working with the Rochester Planning Commission for a handful of months now, and is proposed as your project manager. Julie is a native of nearby Troy and has architecture and planning degrees from University of Michigan, almost 10 years of experience in the field, and brings that detail orientation related especially to form her projects that she manages. Vidya, of course, needs hardly an introduction to Rochester folks, but she has been working from McKenna for 21 years and has considerable zoning and development expertise. Of course, you know, that institutional knowledge with Rochester. Natalie is a familiar face to you all as well, I think, and has been with us for a couple of years and will support our team. In addition to Natalie and Vidya- In addition to Natalie and Vidya and Julie, excuse me, we have a number of other specialties that we bring into projects as we get to that point in the process. On our team, we have geographic information specialist, GIS experts, as well as transportation and urban design and graphic design. So of course, we'll be bringing other expertise. Moving on to the next slide. We wanted to tee up our specific Rochester planning process with a little bit of background on our other planning clients and projects for which we've won awards and have had particular success. When you look at the list of master planning communities in which we've worked extensively, you'll notice that there are a lot of, you know, communities with similar situations as Rochester, where there is very engaged residents who very much want to preserve the community character and find that really special something that we need to promote, maintain, and then double down on. And so here we have Birmingham, Grosse Pointe, Franklin, and then community and New Jersey that Julie managed an award-winning master plan for. In addition, those communities have extensive development pressure and are really wrestling with matters of identity similar to Rochester where, you know, they needed experts to come in and conduct extensive public engagement that would inform what the future land use should be dictated dictating in the master plan. Mentioning public engagement, you know, we are still in the process of months-long public process in Birmingham, where we've engaged over 10,000 residents and stakeholders in a multifaceted process from in-person charrettes back before COVID in 2019 to online surveys, neighborhood roundtable groups, and now a lot of online engagement. We've also pivoted to online public platforms, which Julie will describe in a little bit greater detail that we had bring to the Rochester Master Plan. Our team uses that public engagement to define the appropriate zoning and implementation program for our clients, where we've crafted award-winning zoning and implementation programs in Grosse Pointe and other communities. And then finally, our certifications and wraparound qualifications really make sure that you have processes in place that properly inform your master planning. So next, Julie will talk about our proposed process specifically for Rochester and and then we'll move into questions and answers.
Great. Thanks so much, Sarah. I'm going to go kind of top level over our approach. I liked framing a master plan scope in this way because, you know, you read an RFP, we look at what a community wants, but that comes from city administration. And we don't want to have preordained outcomes when going into a project, right? So I like to think kind of top level. And our approach, I think, can be broken down into these four different steps, which I'll go into in a little bit more detail in the next couple of slides. But overall, our approach is to address your, what I'm calling your housekeeping issues, your pain points, things that we know need to be evaluated, addressed, and updated, but not lose sight of the ability to be forward-thinking, creative, and have a little bit of fun with the planning process. I mean, this can be a really exciting time for a community, especially when you've made an investment in the public engagement process. And hopefully, at the end of that, that'll lay the foundation for a really successful plan implementation. So the first step is to address your housekeeping issues. This is where we do our due diligence. We review the plan in detail, the existing master plan in detail, as well as previous zoning recommendations. We know that these were both drafted by McKenna, but we want to make it clear we're coming in with a clean slate and a fresh set of eyes on those plans. And once again, not with the mindset that we're going to reach the same conclusions or that minor tweaks need to be made. So out of this process, we'll be working closely with city to really refine the scope of what needs to be updated and finalize our work plan. The second step is the public engagement phase, which I've summarized as building public confidence. We talk a lot about building consensus in planning. And I think consensus is is hard. And quite frankly, you might not always get all the people in your community to agree that they want the same types of things. But you can build their confidence in a shared set of values, which are a little bit more top level. You can build their confidence in their elected and appointed officials and their city staff to execute kind of the long-range direction that they'd like to see their community go in. I like to describe values as as things like sustainability. You know, big ideas, big things that people have in their minds of that's what I want my community to be like, as opposed to perhaps specific sustainability goals, which then people may disagree on. But we want to have those top-level conversations and keep them focused on where can we find common ground and and how do we build trust in the planning process? And then the tools that we're going to implement and the decisions that follow from enforcing those tools. We've proposed a really robust set of public engagement, and this was really, this was baked in at the beginning of our scope, and I think it's going to set us up for success, even if we need to pivot completely remotely. As Sarah mentioned, she's doing this for the Birmingham Master Plan right now. I'm doing it for a project on Mac Avenue in Wayne County. As you can see here in the lower middle image, that's our online ideas wall, which we created to be sort of a collaborative charrette board where people could comment and vote and talk about things that they liked and didn't like, but we could put ideas out there to them and collaborate a little bit. I think everything that we've proposed can be done either outside socially distanced or remotely. And those are obviously things that we'll keep in mind as, you know, the situations continue to develop. The third kind of principle or step in this process is to explore new strategic issues. This is where that forward thinking, that fresh thinking comes in. Out of both kind of reviewing the plan, doing some technical analysis and updating of data, and then your public engagement, we're going to have a really good sense of what are the what are the hot new issues that are really top of mind for Rochester? And, you know, things we talked about in the past are age-friendly communities, attainable housing, transportation, sustainability. This is, I think, the part of the scope where we have opportunity to do some big thinking, to do some innovative thinking and give you not only a set of locally relevant and appropriate policies and recommendations for how to move those things forward, but to develop a flexible and creative framework that conveys the thinking behind the planning. So much of a master plan, I think, when they're great, is storytelling and building your narrative with people. It's really, you know, planners, we love data. We love to get in the numbers and point to the numbers and say, well, the numbers say this. At the end of the day, you have to convince people, you have to bring them to your side, you have to give them a little bit of education on the issues and why you're proposing the things that you're proposing and why they're right for their community. It's that feedback loop that happens where we say, we listened, we heard you, and this is what we're giving back to you, which I think makes a plan really successful. So you'll see on the right-hand side some examples of housing policies we put together as part of the Cherry Hill Master Plan I worked on in my previous role. So this had a policy toolkit, which laid out a comprehensive set of of actions, goals and policies to address these dual goals of preservation and strengthening of certain neighborhoods and then identifying appropriate locations and densities for new development. We coupled that with some targeted focus area plans that did kind of the sub-area plan visioning through a public charetting process, as well as you'll see in the middle, some educational materials that explained. This one, for example, talks about what density looks like. It can look a lot of different ways, and it should be tailored to what your community wants. It should be tailored to the place in which it's going to be implemented. So those are the kinds of things that we could bring to the table with with this rest of the master plan. And then finally, a big part of this plan is implementing the zoning recommendations specifically that comes out of it. You know, we want to be focused as well on giving you an implementation framework for other kind of policy recommendations, but the zoning in particular is a desired outcome for the city and one we know needs to be addressed early. So we're proposing that when we have these kind of early meetings with city staff and with city council and planning commission, we start talking about what an adoption process might look like, what the schedule would look like. Do you want to take all of them at the same time if we're doing amendments? Do you want to wait and do them one by one? And things like that. We want everybody on board and we want, we don't want there to be any surprises. We want you to have a pretty good sense of what the ordinance amendments are going to look like before we get to that point and have time outside of the of a formal setting like this to really debate and fine tune so that the adoption process goes more smoothly. That said, we have to stay flexible. Things happen, issues come up, revisions have to be made. I think if we keep constant communication, we'll be able to get out ahead of those things and and deliver on time. So I'm going to hand it back over to Sarah, who's going to wrap it up really quickly, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Julie. So we really hope that, you know, through our proposal and through our presentations, you know, first to the administration and now to city council, you know how passionately we feel about Rochester's continued success and sustainable future building. We think that our team is the right team in a number of different ways. We think that we have the extensive public engagement chops and also wherewithal to have difficult conversations with all types of different community stakeholders so that we can tee up your boards and commissions, including, of course, city council, the legislative body, to make the decisions not anew every single time. Using again Birmingham as an example, we contributed to their downtown plan in 1996, which is still referred to to this day as a plan that they are implementing and getting through. And that has led to great success, of course, in the in the community. And, you know, it was one reason that they chose our team to prepare this really important master plan. You're in Rochester. Excuse me. You did fairly recently prepare a new master plan. Of course, we were your chosen partner for that. That was a smaller scale and a smaller scope. In that effort, we did not enjoy kind of, you know, the resources. We think that the city is going to lend to this planning process where we can have continued conversations and go back to the well with your engaged stakeholders from apartment heads and boards and commission leaders to the DDA director, all the way over to the folks at the library, for example. So, you know, we've really built in a large swath of opportunity to have those conversations so that you can be more confident in your decision-making over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. Finally, you know, we really want to focus on making a plan and testing concepts that will elevate Rochester and build on what you've been so successful in doing over the last number of years. We hope that you trust us to get it right and that you understand that we will do what it takes to make sure that it meets the really difficult differing value points and imperatives that different stakeholders in the community will bring to our attention. You know, we have the the expertise and the knowledge of your community to partner with you effectively over the coming months. And really, thank you for this opportunity. So Julie will MC our questions and answers. And again, thank you so much for for tonight.
Sarah, thank you for that presentation. Questions for council? Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that and the history you've had with the city. This question is for Julie. I'm a visual person. I saw the pictures on the slide that you had build public confidence where it looked like people could come into a room and look at the, you know, charts and drawings and things of that sort. And and that's how I process information. I probably kill a lot of trees with the, all the things I print out, probably more than I should, but I like to hold it and touch it and be able to see it. How does that work in a virtual environment where you can have the people come to a city hall conference room and you have your storyboards around the perimeter of the room? How do you how do you mimic that in a virtual setting, which we're all living in right now?
I think that's a great question, and I think it's one that we're all still trying to find the best way to do. I mentioned the ideas wall that we did for Mac Avenue. That was an excellent way that we could do it. The important thing there is that we wanted two-way communication. So we were able to put out images. We had focus area plans, for example. So people were looking at conceptual site plans and illustrative renderings, as well as policy statements, and could talk to us and talk to each other. And just having that visual kind of idea board in front of them, I thought was did a really good thing there. I'm working on a zoning ordinance update right now for another community, and we're doing half and half. We're doing an outdoor set of socially-distanced boards at their farmer's market. And then all of that's going to be pulled onto an online tool that's essentially, it organizes your board PDFs in a nice, clean website, so people can look at all the different boards. They can look at photos of what people voted on during the recent engagement and then drop comments on that board like they would at a at a public meeting. It's not perfect. I think we all miss the the things that we glean from people by talking to them in person. And that's certainly a challenge, even if you do have the visuals plus maybe a webinar supplemented on to talk to people one-on-one. But those are some of the ways that we're doing it. I also, I don't want to gloss over, I don't want to go on forever about public engagement, but it's a passion of mine. And something we've done quite success, or at least I've done quite successfully, is the the item there that's called Public Meetings in a Box. This is where we essentially empower people to go into their own home in smaller groups, which I think is a great thing right now, where they can physically pull the materials out and and look and discuss with one another. And then we give them all the information they need to funnel that feedback back to us in a way that we can coalesce it up. So that's just, those are just some of the ways that we've started to think duly about how we can keep that kind of public dialogue going.
Thank you, Julie.
Councilmember Albrecht, if I may, just add one item to that, too. You know, we have provided, you know, generous allowance for public engagement and one concern that I've heard in other communities is about older residents engagement with the online platforms and concerns over that. So Julie mentioned that we've hosted webinars where there is an opportunity for dialogue actually in the virtual space. I think that we could host office hours over the telephone, for example, for folks who just aren't going to dial in through a computer and also host office hours on a computer. I think that those terms are really kind of easy to understand rather than saying, you know, we'll have a webinar or this or that, where they're unsure what that's going to mean. So it's really like a one-on-one dialogue. In Birmingham, we did drop-in clinics, and we can do the same type of thing where it's, you know, an entire day a window of time where people can drop in, interact with us. We would walk them through the concepts. They asked their questions. We logged their input.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Keith Lee?
Thank you. I really appreciate your public library backgrounds. I think that was a nice attention to detail. And I appreciate the commitment that you've had to our city in the past. I know that you're familiar with who we are and and what we value in the city of Rochester. I, to our council member Selvia's point in her last question, though, it's also very important to have fresh perspectives and to have new ideas. What sorts of trainings have you done to stay on top of the latest and greatest things that cities and communities can do? and greatest things that cities and communities can do?
Absolutely. Sarah, do you want to take that one? You look like you want to jump in.
For sure. It, um, you know, it's, it's easy for me as the project director to kind of brag about the team that we assemble in and my kind of, of course, in my role. So recently, um, the Michigan Association of Planning asked McKenna and, and I led training for the state of Michigan on the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So in that, in that three series event, we, I actually presented the statutes and facilitated, facilitated questions and answers related to the state laws concerning planning and zoning. So there we weren't, you know, just receiving the training, we were actually the trainers. We have been through extensive state of Michigan training on things like redevelopment readiness all the way down to place making program and emphasis that they had within the last handful of years. Julie is Form Based Code Institute certified. I and Julie, I believe, are both National Shret Institute certified.
Just you.
Okay, that's me. Then Natalie is of course a GIS guru and has received training and even presented her, when she was a student, concepts to the National American Planning Association conferences. So, yes.
I would also like to add that the sustainability study, Sustainable Rochester, the study that was produced for the city and not so long ago, was one of the most path breaking studies that was done of any community. In fact, after Rochester adopted it as a plan, we received inquiries from multiple other communities, not just in Michigan, but in other places also. Wanting to know how exactly the sustainability study was set up and the fact that it provided concrete indicators to evaluate stuff instead of making it just subjective. It was clear objective criteria where you could score points and be fair across the board. So the sustainability study was one of the cutting edge technology kind of planning tools that was designed by McKenna for this process itself. We have a transportation planner on our staff and Paul Lippens has been part of many award-winning transportation, traffic and parking safety measure, those kind of plans. So all new and innovative concepts have been adopted by them. Just to provide a background to the council a little bit, I don't work on it too much. But my original background was I initially started working for the EPA. I actually worked on the Lynn Haven watershed for the city of Virginia Beach, city of Virginia Beach is two hundred and sixty square miles. My job was to prepare a report for the EPA for point source and non-point source pollution and how to protect the watershed and what kind of riparian measures can be taken in order to protect the watershed and enhance water quality for the city. So my background is in environment, although over the years I have come into mainstream urban planning. My background is an MS in ecology and environmental sciences followed by an MS in planning. So I do understand how the planning commission is concerned about the building that is going on in Rochester and concern needs to be taken about what this development pressure is doing to our tree cover, what it's doing to the impervious surface cover and how it's a sort of a domino effect. When you build without planning for the future, what is the effect going to be on the larger city as a whole? And we do have tools to address even that, which we are currently working with the planning commission on the regard to info development. So although we do have a long history with the city, we have a really wide and deep staff and skill level at McKenna to bring forth any new and innovative concept in planning that we think will be suitable for the city of Rochester and will really take it to the next level.
Very good. Anything further from council? All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. As we said, we, we will make a decision next week. And we have a lot to consider. If the council has questions, I'll send them to Blaine, who can then forward them on to you. So again, thank you for coming in. And just, just so you guys know, you know, Vidya's earned a lot of respect in this city. So we're always happy to, uh, to see her here.
Yeah.
Rochester is home away from home at this point.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we see a report from the various boards and commissions, a report from the Downtown Development Authority. Councilmember Peterson.
Uh, yes, mayor, as you know, I was not there. So if you don't mind filling them in or Nick.
I will do that. Um, we, at our last meeting, the, as you, as probably everybody's seen after a few minor glitches, we've got the, um, the decks up for the restaurants. And I think from what I've seen, they look fairly successful. So, so that was good. You know, a bunch of the projects are on hold because as we know, we approved a lot of the projects for sidewalk sales and things with the state going to level five. We're still at level four. So a, as of now, um, some of the things have been canceled. And that was pretty much it. Nick, did you have anything else to add?
No, I think you've got it. It's, yeah, we're here at the PS3. We've had how many meetings? One hundred and twenty-two meetings, mayor, I think. We've been twice in Wednesday or something.
Yeah.
But they, they've been very diligent about looking at place making. I know councilwoman Sella was talking about, you know, where's our opportunities to gather people? I know, Mark, you've been advocating that too. So we get all, like the mayor said, all the platforms were in. They explored at the last meeting, uh, really kind of utilizing the pocket park where the, um, the donor wall is at University of Walnut. We're looking at some more furniture in there, make another place for people to just casually hang out. So they're looking at other little info opportunities. They wanted to see how the platforms went before they spent any more money. Cause they put a hundred thousand in those platforms. So.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing.
Very good. Councilmember Salvia.
Yeah, just a question and not maybe even for tonight, but would just like to hear a bit more going forward. What's really happening at the collaboration studio? Do we have any stories? What's happening? I mean, I know we're selling merchandise and have delivered PPE to businesses, but I'd just like to hear some of the stories of what's happening there.
Well, that's good. I, I, I think Christie would say that she's been pretty busy and a lot of positive things. And another thing is the, the DDA is looking into that spot as a potential permanent spot. The lease is up in the current spot, I think in the spring. So, and the price is pretty, pretty close. So that's something the DDA board is looking at as well.
Mayor, if it's all right, maybe I can invite Christie to the next meeting or maybe one of the next upcoming meetings.
Yeah, that would be good. Just to kind of, yeah, give a report on how the, how the businesses are doing and things. Councilmember Sage.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. So to piggyback off of councilmember Salvia's comments there as well. Whoever we choose for the planner to do our master planning collaboration. I would, I'd be hopeful that we would use the, the, the new DDA site there on Main Street to engage the public, get the feedback we need. It seemed like both, both groups want to get that kind of feedback from the public and that would be a perfect location to gather that information.
Yeah.
Good idea.
As soon as we can get, get to go ahead to have enough people in there, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We could schedule, you know, times and we could do some other stuff, you know. So we, we've looked at, uh, you know, potentially focus groups to a, a, a online platform for appointments, basically. So, uh, you know, there's some interesting ways. So that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, very good. Okay. Next is a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick updates. One, the, the commission passed an addendum to their temporary use permit where participants must recognize that they have a risk of exposure to COVID nineteen through their participation in an event and an agreement that they would conduct that event in accordance with any executive order issued from the state. And then the discussion ensued involving the, the twenty twenty trail events. And unfortunately, all the events that have been scheduled are either canceled or rescheduled for twenty twenty-one. Or if we can do them in twenty twenty, they will be virtual. And I'll give you an example. So we do it, the, the Labor Day Bridgewater is a big event for the trail. And we're going to do that virtually through a bingo card format where there are twelve bridges on the trail and you'll get a bingo card with an, an activity assigned to each square representing each bridge. And then people that complete those activities submit to the Pink Creek Trail and they will then have a raffle for prizes. According.
Good. Councilmember Albrecht.
I'll do the bingo, but I know Mayor Bix whizzes by me on his bike. He's not even going to stop to slow down to, to do, do the bingo. I mean, him and Nancy are always going by on bikes. I'm walking slow and enjoying the trail. So I think it's a great idea, Steve.
Yeah, I, I think we're all trying to redefine our world. So congratulations to that Pink Creek Center. Okay, next we have a report from the planning commission. Um, I will handle that tonight as well. Um, we had one agenda item and we approved the site plan. And I think, uh, Mr. City Manager is coming to city council or is it not?
Yeah, no, this, this was, uh, this is a special exception.
Okay, it's a special.
Not a special project, special.
Special. So that was the property at one thirty-four West University, which is the recipe building of Dr. Talas that is now going to become apartments. And there's apartments from five hundred square foot, small studio apartments up until no larger apartments. And we, there was an issue with handicap accessibility and we have that worked out. So it looks like a pretty nice project and that is now approved. So Dr. Tal can begin to work on that. He's done some demolition, but now he can move on with that.
Mayor, if I could just add, it, it's really a mixed use. So like recipes is still going to be staying in there. There's still a few businesses. And then there's going to be apartments, uh, kind of like the ground units and then up on the top level.
Yeah, I think that finance place at the other end is going to stay.
Correct.
Recipes is going to stay and, and the rest of it. So, um, you know, it could be a.
What is, what is the reason why it has to come to city council? What's the difference between a special exception and a special project?
Nick?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So a special project is when the project itself cannot meet zoning requirements. So we're asking for a waiver from one of the elements in the zoning district. Special exception is clearly identified as a, a use as permitted within that zoning classification. And then if you can meet the following standards, you can't waive those, thankfully you can't. So in this case, it was the upper story apartments required a special exception. In downtown, you cannot have residential on the first floor or only on the second floor. So it wouldn't take away the good retail on the first floor. Or you just pointed out that the rest of that building in the back line, recipes and the financial group is off the sauce and that would be, be stopped. So it's a pure mixed use though.
Yeah. So it does not have to come to the city council. Mayor Protem Babak.
Yeah, I apologize for missing that meeting. Um, it was my daughter's birthday and had, had to be with her at that time. So. But I, one, one thing that I, I thought of when I was looking at the plans and I, I was just going to kind of check, check on if I were to be at the meeting was all the, the egress windows that you guys are, were comfortable with. Was there any discussion on that? I'm assuming it's all building code. Those lower levels were, were, they're going to be fine in terms of getting people out of there if they need to.
So the egress windows are an actual addition to what the code would require because he's sprinkling the whole lower level and the second level. Actually, those windows could have been waived, but the developer decided to put those in as a secondary means of egress. And then it'll also add nice natural light into those lower apartments. So it's a win-win. And not only from an egress standpoint, but also the natural light. Good question.
Excellent. Very good. All right. Thank you.
And then finally, uh, at the next meeting, the good news is we do have a number of projects coming to the planning commission meeting on August third, including the Riverwalk. Randazzo project is coming back, a multi-family project at two oh five, twelve oh five North Main Street. Some facade work at the BP station. So there is stuff coming. You know, to planning commission, there is activity going on in the city. So I think that's a, a good sign. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what, what are the, what's the addition? I mean, the, the, the changes to the facade at the BP are ongoing. So are there? Is that all?
I can give, yeah, I can give you an update this year.
Yep.
So when they start, the planning commission originally approved it with stone and everything's exactly the same except for when they, if you can picture where the Buschini sign was, there was a peak. So they got into the peak and it was rotten. And so Mr. Tom McCall and I met, met the builder out there, that William Fishroyd. And we talked to him and it's like, the planning commission originally had hoped to take that can or the corner straight across would be a little more uniform. But he didn't want to spend the money at the time, so he left the peak there. So now that it's rotten, there's an opportunity to split it off. So he has to come back to the planning commission to technically get approval to square it off. So, um, it's a technicality, but that's where our industry, that's all, nothing less. It's actually something nicer.
There's always something at the planning commission, right? Okay, next is a report from the Tree Committee. Chairman Albrecht.
Yes, I feel like it's a weekly report and a weekly meetings, but we're making progress. Before our last meeting, I mentioned we had met with the homeowners association representatives on July ninth. We took all the comments they had provided. Uh, we summarized them and we had a meeting on the twenty-third. The meeting agenda you see in your packet, uh, without the HOA members. It was just, it was the true Tree Committee. And, um, the city attorney Crot did a very good job of summarizing the bullet points so that we could respond to the HOA uh, in a measured way, which we did. We have sent them, um, what basically each of their concerns and what we're proposing for them. And we'll be meeting with them this week at one o'clock on Wednesday. So, um, we hope that that, uh, we think it's been a very, uh, now, now it would be a more balanced interaction between the two groups. And we've listened, um, we've taken into consideration, we've made some changes and, um, I don't know what the response will be. I think, uh, councilmember Salvia did a very good job of reaching out this weekend with, uh, one of the more outspoken, uh, members to sort of provide her, her point of view, which I, I think will be very helpful in the, in the end run.
Thank you. Uh, next is a report from the Facilities Committee. Any of the three members want to jump in? Councilmember Salvia?
Sure, I can say something here. I'm sure the others want to say something as well. So at the last facilities meeting, um, uh, the week after the last council meeting, uh, we reviewed in detail the, the write-up provided by Amoresco for the community house. So I can't recall how many pages, maybe close to a hundred pages of detailed photographs, estimates. And so their analysis has six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of maintenance required to the exterior of the building. In addition, another seventy-five thousand for the interior or the responsibility of the community house as a nonprofit. So, um, in discussion around that, the committee agreed to send out the request for proposal for the community house to get bids on, um, really doing the updates that we have discussed and getting input from builders and developers on what that would look like. That would be my perspective. Any other comments?
Okay.
Mayor, okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Peterson, go ahead.
I was just going to add that, uh, the report was very in-depth, very, very, one of the best that we've ever had for, um, a study done, uh, in the community, uh, to help us make the right decision. I do think that, um, getting the RFPs out there to see what the true cost is going to be and the length of time is something that is important to do. Um, I do want to just use caution when they come back that under the state where we are fiscally. And hopefully we can make the best decision. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. Did you?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, there was one, um, discussion that we had regarding the RFP and, um, kind of adding in, uh, some of the elements that, uh, were in the report. I think we're calling, we're recalling them, uh, uh, Mr. City Manager, alternates or, uh?
Correct. Our, our public work staff actually just completed that and they gave me an update today. So we're, uh, working on the timeframe and then we'll get the RFP out. It will include some of the alternates because we, you know, originally worked with our engineers to design the RFP, the scope. And now that we just got that very detailed, it was over 83 pages of information. So we were able to include now and figure out which ones are, you know, can be alternates so that we could get a better idea of some of those things in addition to the scope that we had already created.
Thanks.
Mayor, I just want to add the work that the DPW director and Jason and all of them put into reviewing that report as well and giving us those alternatives was very much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, next receiver report from the Infrastructure Committee. Councilmember Albright or Salvia.
I'll take the first shot at it. The, our consultant, we sort of moved into how they're going to present and some of the communication materials that they would use for the, you know, to explain the water rates, the study and everything else like that. And we felt this was the key part because we went back to why we selected them. That was one of the things we as City Council talked about. You know, Blaine could stand up there, the mayor could stand up there, any one of us could stand up and say, here's what we're doing and everything else like that. But having this consultant come in, it's in very good graphics, materials and way they're going to explain to our residents. We talked about even, you know, on the last tax bill, when we had the insert in there, using various methods. We, we talked a lot about, we've got to over communicate this. We've done a lot of work on this. There's a lot of good news, good, good news coming out of here. So not just the newsletter and we knew, you know, with Jane on board that we're going to use the website, the newsletter, maybe tax inserts, water bills, all different methods to really communicate the message of what we've done, explain the difference between infrastructure and water coming out of your pipes. You know, are really two different charges, how we have to plan for, 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 you know, the future, not just today. So I thought it was a good, good meeting. We as a group all wanted to look at the materials and make some comments to send back to them. So they're going to, you know, re, listen to what we have, well, they'll, they'll read what we have to say, whether they'll, they'll make all the changes remains to be seen. But I thought the initial presentation was again, in keeping with the work they've done to date.
Yeah, I don't really have a lot to add to that. I, I agree with that. It's, I'm just looking forward to all of council and the public being able to see the presentation and, and just see really the, the good place we're in in terms of all of our water rates.
So always encouraging to hear positive water news as opposed to what we usually have. All right, thank you. Next is new business for referral miscellaneous. First item is the non-union part-time buyer employees wage schedule adjustment recommendation. Some small dollar amounts, but some very complicated stuff. Saw that Blaine discussed.
Yeah. So thi- this is almost what I would kind of say is, is housekeeping. But as we, you know, brought forward the contract with the fire employees, that's, that's our full-time employees in the fire department. We thought by basically bringing that over to our part-time employees that, you know, keeping the same hourly wage would, would make sense. However, due to the actual wage schedule as people are going through it, that actually had a negative impact on seven specific employees. It had a positive impact on over 20. But these seven were more recently hired and so they actually saw a decrease. So it's more of a technical fix. But what, what I've presented and what I'm recommending is basically called red circling. It's an HR term so that those individuals would not be really financially impacted. And when they do normally move through the scale, they'll actually go through and move up at the, their appropriate time. So for an example, and I put this in my memorandum, if somebody was earning $17 and, and 10 cents, the new schedule might have them making $17.05. Might not seem like a, you know, a, a large difference, but over time, you know, that five cents. So we'd be circling at 17, 10. And then when they hit their, their annual increase, they'll then be able to move up in the, in the regular schedule, just like anybody else. So as the mayor noted, this is a, a small overall total cost. We've estimated around $1,600 for this fiscal year and less than 2,000 over the following two years, which is the timeframe that we have our current collective bargaining agreement with the fire union. So tonight, what I'm asking is the ability, so the authority to red circle the wage schedules for those individuals that were unfortunately impacted and make that retro to July 1st, when the change actually went into effect. And I know the fire chief is supportive as well.
So is there a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve as presented.
Or Councilmember Peterson.
Ford.
Or if our Councilmember Sage, I just, I just want to know, I think, I think City Manager told me that all seven people noticed a five cent reduction in their paycheck.
Yeah, it was the, the, the five cents and then actually a few of the positions were up to 23 cents. So it was a little bit more noticeable on those.
Yeah. So people are looking at their paychecks. Madam Clerk, do the rule, please.
Leanne, you're muted.
Yes, I was. Bixen?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albright?
Yeah.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, next is we see the check register reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yep, I'll do this one and then the City Manager update, if you don't mind. Check register report we had in the packet, the July 17th and 27th. In addition, for the manager's update, our summer newsletter is at the post office. It should be in people's hands this week. However, if somebody wants to get a sneak peek, it is on our city website. So it is digitally available as well. The only other update I have, because I know the clerk will give an update on the upcoming election on August 4th. So I won't steal her thunder. But we, we are still, Jane's been working very diligently on getting to reach our goal of 80 or higher for census. We're at, we're over 77%, but we, we, we still haven't hit our, our internal goal, really of 80% or higher. So if residents have not yet filled out their form, they can go to www.2020census.gov. We'll have that information on our city website as well to complete their actual census form. So I know some people, you know, misplaced it or got put in the recycling pile and some other things. Jane's been working with some of the apartment complexes and there's some additional signage that has been up. We moved up from around 75, over 77, so we incrementally have moved. But we still really are shooting for that goal of over 80%. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a number of election updates for council and residents. So next Tuesday, August 4th is Election Day. Polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And a reminder that all of our regular precincts and polling locations are open. We did not consolidate any or change locations. Rochester Hills had to do that with the number of theirs because they were located in senior living facilities. I met with Chief Shettenholm and Chief Seeslick to talk about Election Day and get their thoughts on what we could do to address the COVID situation. We talked about having people touch, or sharing with the election workers as little as possible. So I've come up with the idea of when your, the election workers will hand you a baggie that will have a pen, your application to vote, the instructions and your I voted stickers in it, rather than having all those things laid out on tables where people will rummage through them and touch them. You'll go right up to the election workers after you've stopped at the hand sanitizer station and we're offering masks, but we can't enforce that in any way, and gloves. And again, hand sanitizers at that first table. They'll get a pen. It's designed to be a one-use. They'll turn it in at the end. So we won't have pens inside the voting booths. The workers will have cleaning materials that they can go through and clean up the vote booths afterwards. So I, we also have sneeze guards. The election workers will have space shields, mask gloves. So we've done the best we can. We have also, Christie had leftover business kits, the PPE kits from Oakland County. So I'm going to be deploying those and using those so that people, if they've been in our downtown businesses, they're familiar with the signage already. So I thought that would be an added benefit that they would feel more comfortable. As far as absentee ballots, I've been advising you when we're going up, we have reached almost 3,200 through today. People can get them mailed up through this Friday at 5:00. After that, you will need to come in in person and it will be open Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00. And, and again, Monday up until 4:00 PM, so 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM for absentee ballots. We're also within the 14-day period that persons can come in and register to vote with the city clerk with proof of residency and they can vote at that time if they choose. And finally, Wednesday evening, two nights from now at 5:00 in the evening, in council chambers will be conducting the public accuracy test for the voting equipment. So, and I think that's it. Thank you.
I have a question for the, are, are we confident on the turnout for election workers? Or is there, is there a plan if people do not show up?
So right now, we're in good shape for, for August. We have four workers and some five, so we're okay now. And I've gotten quite a few phone calls just this week from, generated from the post. So I have backups. November, I'll be advertising as soon as this election goes, is over to, to get more for November. So right now, we're fine.
Very good. Assistant City Manager Banda, Chief, anything?
Well, in case you get questions, I talked to, I blame this on Jane and Christie, but you'll see a lot of little, the little looking signs all over town. And they did both of that, or Jane took initiative on her own to get in front of the apartment complex, get these little signs out. Again, we're government, so we can do that temporarily. So that's why those signs are out. And then Christie and her staff were good enough to get some pretty poignant signs like, hey, help us out here. Wear a mask, keep your distancing. We put those in almost every single landscape thing. So I don't like signs cluttering everywhere, but the message is important. So temporarily, we're going to leave those out in both instances. So if people ask about that, they both got approval and we're working together to try to keep our city safe.
Okay. Attorney Jeff?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Sandy and Joellen, do you guys have any want to add?
No, sir, I'm all set.
Okay. Councilmember Sage?
Uh, nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Keith Lee?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
No, thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem Bavacqua?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Wow, what's going on tonight? Everybody's, Councilmember Albright?
I just, I tried to break the streak. I just wanted to compliment the DDA on several things. I was a huge advocate of the donor wall and for such a long time, there was only three plaques up there. And I, I, I reached out to Ben and, and they made it happen. So between Ben, Christie and, and Tony LaPuma, it now has, I think, seven or eight plaques up there. It's on that, you know, pop, not pop, what do we call those? Park, park?
Packet. Packet.
University and Walnut. So I just think it's a great idea. It's tax deductible and, and, and really hope that wall fills up. Secondly, I don't know if you guys saw, I haven't seen it in person. I just saw on Facebook the back in the day signs, which I think are amazing, done in conjunction with the Rochester Hills Museum and Van Hughes and Farm. So again, compliments to the DDA board and everything else that they're doing. And as the mayor mentioned, the parklets, every time I've gone by, there's people sitting in the, at least the major restaurants. So they move very quickly on it. So Bravo and keep up the great work.
Thank you. Councilmember Salvia?
Nothing to add, except welcome to the 80s basement here. This is my backup location since the library internet wasn't working. So welcome to the 80s basement and have a good night.
It's always good to have a backup plan in these technology days.
We love it.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, and it probably as a, a, a lot of us here, just to really emphasize everybody who keep their social distance, wear a mask. We all need to be leaders in it. And also we need, and I know it's difficult for businesses and for restaurants, but you know, the businesses and restaurants also need to make sure that they keep vigilant and, you know, keep the social distance. And, you know, if people move tables closer together, they need to move them back and things like that. So we all realize it's difficult times, but we all need to, you know, keep safe and keep our community safe. So that's all I have. Thank you to Jane for helping with the technology in these meetings. And without that, there's no closed session. So meeting adjourned and everybody have a good night and thank you for coming.
All right. Miss you all. Night, everybody.
Thank you.